Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for February 7th, 2022 to order and take a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss two items pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, and the chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining bargaining position. And second, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the chair so declares. Christopher D. Wise versus Town of Harwich Planning Board in Hall's path.
Second. Moved in seconded. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We will return to open session no later than 6:30 PM.
I know.
Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for February 7th, 2022 back to order. We started tonight's executive session in executive session at 5:30, where we discussed collective bargaining for all town unions, as well as a lawsuit that we're involved in between Christopher D. Wise, Town of Harwich Planning Board. Some decisions were made, but because it's ongoing, we will not be announcing that tonight. With that, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board object to taking the public hearing out of order and do that before the presentation? Okay, we'll start with public comment and announcement.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Kilmet, Chief of Police. We don't have anything in your packet, but I thought it was important that I mention that Officer John Mitchell has announced his intention to retire on Friday. Actually, I think he told us last week, but I realized this would be my last opportunity to tell the board, because his last day is actually Friday. He's actually not working. He's going to be taking some of his final time off. But I just wanted to, you know, I just wanted to publicly announce his retirement and just give you a quick rundown of, you know, very brief, I'm sorry, but of his career as a police officer in Harwich, which is really incredible. He was actually hired in 1987. So we're looking at close to 35 years of service to the community, and a large majority of those years were done up at Cape Tech as the school resource officer. So for any of you who are familiar with that role, that's a big job. That is really a big job. It's not do your eight hours and go home. It's a commitment to the students and the staff and the community. But it's also an opportunity to have multiple, multiple positive interactions as a police officer with those students and staff and parents and members of the community. So his personnel file is literally bulging with letters of thank you and commendations from over those years. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to publicly thank him as Chief of Police and on behalf of our entire police department for his, you know, very nearly 35 years of dedicated service to the, to the community, to the police department, and especially to Cape Tech up there for over 20 years. He's done a fantastic job. And as typical of John and his character, his humble character, he didn't wish to be here tonight. He didn't want any fanfare as he departs at the end of the week. But I felt it was extremely important that we recognized those years of service that he has given the community. So thank you.
He's not here, but. Go ahead, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I go back a ways here. He was also one of the leading forces in helping to create a youth chaplain program in this community, and later that grew into youth services that you see today. And I can tell you, having done Jive Zed and having a bunch of kids that have gone through the school while he was there, he was considered to be the most trusted adult for almost every kid that I experienced that I, that I went through. That's saying something. Teachers, parents, he was considered to be the most solid guy as an adult that they knew.
Yeah, makes a huge difference. That role does.
Larry, anything?
No, just thanking for our services.
Julie?
20 years as a school resource officer. It's amazing. I mean, what an accomplishment. So.
Mary?
I'm with you, Julie. He must be a saint.
Yeah. Serious.
All those kids, that's fabulous.
Please extend our thank you.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment and announcement. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
What's that? Go ahead.
So holding off to see if anyone else would be coming forward and not as a tit for tat for what Chief Kilmet just said, but I know the board is aware, and I'll be talking about a process later this evening under the TA's report. But as you see in your packet, our town clerk, who has announced her retirement or her intention to not run again, has formally announced her retirement, which is effective on February 25th, so just a little bit more than three weeks. And this is one occasion where I think I can speak as well as anybody, because although I've only been in Harwich for six and a half years, Anita Doucette was one of the first clerks I met when I became a clerk in 2000. So for me, it's very bittersweet that she announces her retirement effective that date, but that's because I'm selfish. I want to just acknowledge the years and years of service. She's going to kill me because I could say more than three decades of service, but you know, the, the age of clerks that have served in their hometown for, for that long is going the wayside. And so this is a seminal moment for us. But I think personally, it's a, it's a happy moment for Anita and her family, because she chooses the manner and the time in which she gets to enjoy her retirement. So I didn't want to just leave it until the end of the meeting. At the end of the meeting, I will speak to the board in my report about how we go through the process of while we wait for the election results, having an interim town clerk. But I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Anita Doucette and her decades of service to the town as our town clerk, knowing that she will be retiring at the end of this month.
Thank you, Joe. Comments from the board on that? Mary?
I had the pleasure of working for Anita for about a year as an election worker. And all the rumors about the election fraud and all this, I thought, well, maybe I'll go and work for Anita for a year. And I was just so impressed with how she kept everything moving. And it's a bunch of people that come in and work for her for the day, or in some cases, I worked for her for a couple of weeks in the office. Just an amazing individual, and I will miss her.
Thank you, Mary. Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Anita and I have been close personal friends for probably 25 years. She's one of the people I value advice from more than anybody. It's going to be a big hole, both not only intellectually, but in my heart.
Thank you, Dawn. Julie?
Yeah, I would say the same. I mean, somebody giving that much, you know, to any entity is amazing, but to your own town, it's pretty, pretty absolutely stunning that you're able to do it. But I also think people don't realize the depth of the knowledge that a town clerk has to have and all the legal ramifications of decisions that she's in charge of making. So not only were we lucky to have her loyalty, but her expertise, so we'll miss her terribly.
Thank you. Larry?
Yes, I think the highest praise we can give Anita is, is that we take the elections for granted. And that's not true everywhere. So I think that's where I'll leave it.
I would just echo the board's comments and Dawn's comments specifically. I've known Anita most of my life, and for the first two years on the board, she was my stop at least twice a week to learn something. She taught me endless, endless things, mostly how to calm down and follow the lengthy process that's involved in a lot of what we do. They're not quick decisions in government. Everything moves slow is what's really stuck in my mind. I'm sure we'll all have a lot, a lot more to say about Anita.
All right, moving on to the public hearing. Discussion and possible vote to approve the new inside Sunday entertainment license application for Beachlight LLC DBA Seal Pub and Cafe 703 Main Street. Their ask is 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM TV, radio, background music, and 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM acoustic live music, unamplified and karaoke. Now, just to remind the board, we voted on this about a month ago, these exact times. And because of misinformation and us not having, the following week, we voted to rescind that vote and hold a public hearing and to give them a, or maybe give them a Sunday entertainment license. So we've been through this, but because of a technicality, we rescinded the vote. The 6:00 AM, we've had a lot of conversation about 6:00 AM, and especially around churches. And I know Selectman Howell has been, has been very consistent on that. The, the, the key here is we did learn from legal that in order to turn on your sono system, i.e. radio, or a television, you need an entertainment license. So this is, this entertainment license, and you can see the language that Danielle put in here is very specific, that the actual live entertainment, acoustic only, is at night, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The rest of it is to cover them legally. The applicant, I would say Josh is here tonight, has been exceptionally patient with the town through this process, and we are actually changing our forms on what you apply for because there are so many boxes that made no sense. So Danielle has done an outstanding job changing the applications and clarifying this. And what you see on the agenda tonight is what we'll see on the agenda going forward. It'd be what the ask is and any change from what it has been in the past. I would also say that last year, there was no entertainment license issued for Sunday, so we are considering this one a new one. But in reality, they did have entertainment inside last year. We're tightening it up, and we're having a public hearing on this based on the past year's events. And I did explain that to the applicant, because I was asked why there's another one on here that didn't, doesn't, isn't having a public hearing. It's in my purview as the chair to set the agenda the way I see fit, as long as it's legal. And I chose to have a public hearing on this because there was so much publicity brought to this in the past. With that, Mary, I would take the public hearing notice.
Harwich Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing. Application for Entertainment License Monday, February 7th, 2022. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Sections 181 and 183A, on Monday, February 7th, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 PM in the Don B. Griffin Room located at Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, for the purpose of considering the new Sunday Entertainment License application submitted by Beachlight LLC DBA Seal Pub and Cafe 703 Main Street, Harwich. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend. Remote participation is also offered. Please see the posted agenda for dial and information. The Harwich Board of Selectmen, published in the Cape Cod Times, January 24th, 2022.
Thank you, Mary. Josh, if you would, I said most everything, I'm sure, but if, if there's anything you want to add, just add it, and if not, we'll open it up to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing further to add, that it is just following the protocol that Danielle set forth on the specificity of the hours, so that it's clear that it's just morning is just ambient coffee music, and there potentially we could have a guitarist unamplified at night.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone wish to speak on this? Anyone online wish to speak on this?
I'm the Reverend Susan Thomas from First Congregational Church. Seems like we were here just last week, and at that time, the request was for a outdoor license from Thursday through Sunday, 6:00 to 10:00 PM, and annual. And during that meeting, we, the select board said no Sundays, and then we reduced the hours to 6:00 to 9:00. And then we put parameters around instead of annual, that it was Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend. And I'm just seeing this again this week, and I'm here again this week, and I'm reading Sundays, 6:00 to 10:00 PM, annual. The only difference is inside, obviously, but inside is outside, and we still have no plan from the seal according to the liquor license regulations of the town under Section 1.09 and 1.10 about how they will address their patrons.
Thank you. Anyone else? Make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Julie was the second, Joe. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Start with comments, and I'll start with Larry.
I think we debated this at great length in the last meeting, and I take their concerns, but I'm, I'm willing to give them a chance to fulfill their commitment and manage the parking lot, manage the traffic as they said they would. This is indoor only, so we don't, the noise issue shouldn't, should not come up. And so I'm, I'm in favor of getting this, moving this forward.
Thank you. Julie?
Yeah, I feel the same, and then we've talked about this at length, it's 6:00 to 10:00 indoor, and it's acoustic according to the application, so I don't have any other comments.
Mary?
I'm with Larry. I'm confident that they will manage this, and it's indoors, which is different to me. So I'm in favor.
Thank you. Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would have preferred to wait to see what the outcome of the current addition to their liquor license yields. I mean, I have no problem at all with the inside radio and TV, because apparently you can't even turn a TV on without a license. But even with acoustic, I'm not going to be able to support it, because as Mary pointed out last time, there were a bunch of violations, and I'd love to be able to see some stabilization out of, out of actual experience, as opposed to saying, what, what could go wrong? Because some things have gone wrong.
Thank you, Dawn. Can I get a motion?
I move, where'd it go? I move that we vote to approve the new inside Sunday entertainment license application for Beachlight LLC DBA Seal Pub and Cafe 703 Main Street for 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM TV, radio, background music, and 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM acoustic live music, unamplified and karaoke.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Since it includes both, nay.
And I am an aye. Four to one, Joe? Thank you. All right. Presentations. Town Administrators present the fiscal year 2023 budget message.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm going to assume it's okay to take my mask off to present?
Absolutely.
And for the board, what you have going around is the budget message that I released Saturday morning, that is in the, in the board's packet, which is available on the website, and additional information, budget documents from our finance director. And that gets to the point in the memo where I said additional documentation will be presented in accordance with the requirements of the charter. So with that, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as I said to board members earlier, and I'm going to modify it slightly, this is the end of the beginning process of the budget discussions for the Town of Harwich. That is to say, I am providing this budget message in compliance with the Harwich Charter, Chapter 9, Section 2, Clause 924, which says, "On or before the second Tuesday in February, the town administrator shall present a comprehensive budget and budget message." And so as I've outlined in the budget message itself, I think what's first, most important, and hopefully for the board, Finance Committee, and then the general public going forward, what's most helpful is a description of the, the manner in which I came to the conclusions that you see in the draft documents in front of you, and the priorities that I had within the budget message itself. First is recognizing that this is the third consecutive budget that I've had a hand in. I will put it out there for all to bring back to me that in 84 days, 84 days and 10 minutes, when we are mercifully, hopefully, in our community center with our annual town meeting to discuss this budget, that for the third year in a row, I will tell you that I've always believed and have been taught that a municipal budget is meant to be a statement of a town's priorities. And so every department that we have has gone through their process. They have offered up recommendations, what they would consider to be, in many cases, enhancement of services that they're seeking. And in every instance, they have affirmed that the budget presented to you supports their core mission, which I think is important to emphasize. And that is to say that this is not a budget that intends to cut. However, unlike other municipalities, this is not a budget that could be considered a growth budget with regard to programs and services. And so as I've written in the document itself, we, we should remain mindful of many of the headwinds and the realities that we face as we embark on this budget process. Our budget is impacted by actions of the past, and that would be debt exclusions from prior years, where the town still has related obligations for debt, such as the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. We are going to hear a presentation on Monday, February 14th, from Dr. Carpenter regarding the Montemoy School Assessment, and we still, as a town, have the issue of dealing with our regional agreement assessment process. The budget materials that you have in front of you assumes no change to that assessment process, even though we're very hopeful that we will go through the process of changing that, coming up with an alternate assessment measure that in the future should help us in Harwich and provide some relief. But that's not factored in yet, because we haven't completed that process. As you see in the memorandum, and as you've heard me say many times, we are presently, we, the town, through you folks as the executive branch, me, your representative, along with our finance director and assistant town administrator as management, are in active negotiations with all eight of the town's collective bargaining associations. And so this budget, as presented, does not yet contain a recommendation on cost of living adjustments for what would be, in most cases, the first year of a multi-year contract starting in fiscal year 23. So that is an issue that will be negotiated, and that is an issue that will be discussed and debated over the coming weeks, if not coming months. And yet, it is another factor that will impact upon our budget process. And then last but certainly no means least, would be what we all understand, I think generally, are the external impacts to our, to our town, and that's what just about everyone is dealing with. Supply, supply chain issues that are causing costs to be increased, tight labor markets and pressures on not only us as an employer, but also in the companies that provide the goods that we're looking to buy. And last but by no means least, what we're dealing with as a nation, with highest inflation that I think by one estimate is certainly the highest we've seen in 30, if not 40 years. So these are all things that have come to bear on, on the budget itself. So what I've done then is establish priorities that I believe our budget should account for. And these priorities are outlined in the memorandum, and they're priorities because we have to pick something. We would love to be able to enhance all of our departments, programs, and services, because that's for the benefit of our residents, our taxpayers, and, and for the many folks that we try to attract here as a Cape Cod resort town. But specifically for fiscal year 23, my priorities are, in alphabetical order, if I do it right, culture. And culture insofar as what we at a town have been dealing with, with the, hopefully, not only one, which is standard, but two for Harwich, cultural districts, that we should be able to be recognizing, hopefully as soon as the spring of this year. And that's a great thing for our town, because that, those cultural districts will reaffirm Harwich, I think, as a leader in cultural affairs, not just on Cape Cod, but certainly throughout the Commonwealth. And to do that, to prioritize culture, one of the items that this budget talks about is a, a brand new full-time position, a position that I'm referring to as Director of Cultural Affairs. And that person would be the point person for the town, reporting through the administrator on any and all matters related to cultural affairs. That is, they would support the cultural council that we have, a very robust and strong group of folks that work with the Mass Cultural Council. This person would be the point person at the building known as the Cultural Center, our former middle school. This person would be responsible for managing the Artisan Shacks, one of the greatest examples of culture that we offer here in the town, along with the Cultural Center and the artists and artisans that exist within that. But there's also some real-world applications, if I could say it that way, beyond just the, the good and feel-good culture, and that's, we would rely upon a Director of Cultural Affairs, given their tieback to the, the Harwich Cultural Council and the Mass Cultural Council, which is heavily driven by grants, that this person would be our point person on grant writing. First and foremost, for any cultural aspects that relate to the districts, that relate to the Cultural Center, but also just being a subject matter expert for the town going forward on, on grants. And we've talked many times in many ways about grants that are out there that can come to bear on the town. So culture is a priority of this budget. This budget also prioritizes two areas that I've linked together, even though traditionally and programmatically, they're not automatically linked together, but that is supporting health and, health and human services. And for me, health is abundantly clear what it is. It is our Health Department, working under the aegis of our Health Board of Health. There is no greater discussion in the mid 2020s on health, given the fact that I had to take a quick leave of my mask as we are in pandemic. And so the board has said consistently, over the last few years of pandemic, that we need to provide support and more support to health, and this budget prioritizes that. An adjunct to health is human services. You may recall back in the fall, when I was writing a financial assessment for you folks, as is required by the charter, is one of the first steps to develop a budget, is that we, as a town, are graying. We are getting older. Our employee age is creeping up, average age is creeping up, and we're finding that folks are, I think in a very positive way, choosing Harwich as one of their spots for their golden years, if you will, which is a wonderful thing. But with that comes the need for services, and so this budget prioritizes human services through the Council on Aging Department. And specifically for health, it's a health inspector, and for Council on Aging, it's a program specialist. And additionally for them, for those departments, it's food inspections and supplemental nutrition programs. So that's how this budget prioritizes health and human services. Housing. We, we talk, I think, just about at every meeting of the board, and really any, most meetings of any board, committee, or commission, and certainly at the staff level. And I know recently, there was a meeting of the Community Preservation, talking about one of the applications that the town has through the Affordable Housing Trust for the housing coordinator. And I think the town has made good use of the CPC funds over the last five years and that position for coordination, but we relied upon that from a vendor. And to me, if we're going to make the commitment to, to moving the dial on affordable housing and making a substantive difference as soon as we can, then I want to work away from a housing coordinator and develop a position that I refer to as a housing advocate. And so that this budget would create that position. And again, these new positions, the Director of Cultural Affairs and the Housing Advocate, will have companion articles. I'll be getting draft articles to you for your meeting next week. So they'll be So there'll be two occasions and two men, uh, means by which we can debate these these positions. But the Housing Advocate is meant to be a manifestation, a person that we can point to to say that Harwich is taking housing and affordable housing very seriously, and we're committing to a full-time, permanent position to support the Board of Selectmen, but the Affordable Housing Trust, the Housing Committee, and to truly be that first person to advocate for the housing discussion and the housing needs that we have. Priorities then extend on to Public Safety. I can't talk about the pandemic and can't talk about health and not recognize Public Safety, not only for what they've endured during the pandemic, but what they've also endured with the national discussion, certainly directly with police as it gets to policing in communities and what it means to be a Public Safety Officer in the twenty-first century. And so this budget supports their efforts and increased community engagement. And I think that is a very positive way of saying that Harwich renews and restores its engagement with the public, not only that we serve, but to create the dialogue and the relationships between the police and the community by reinstituting our Community Police Academy. I think one of the best examples of community policing engagement that we have on Cape Cod. We, the budget adds training money for our Public Safety Officers, and in this day and age, adds additional resources for mental health resources. Because we, as we endure pandemic, and we know what it does to each of us as an individual, and those of us that are parents and have children, we also hear, but none of us at this table can truly understand, the toll that the pandemic is taking on our Public Safety Officers. And so our chiefs have made it a priority, and I support their priority, to create additional mental health resources to benefit our men and women that are enduring those issues and and just strengthening our commitment to them as employees. And then last but not least, woven throughout those priorities is a is a reinvigoration, if I can say, of our need to expand technology. Not only technology to support our departments, but really going back to something that I was mindful of through the board, that I think goes back to at least your budget messages for at least two or three years ago, maybe even longer. But that is for the town to truly rely upon technological solutions to support the employees we have and to do things in a more efficient and effective manner. And then in the end, hopefully, supporting the public with streamlined applications and processes. And so those are the priorities that I've emphasized with this budget. Beyond that, as we talk about next steps for for this board, for the Finance Committee, and for the other entities such as Capital Outlay, there'll be a discussion about the Capital Outlay Plan that was recently endorsed, excuse me, the budget that was endorsed last week by the Capital Outlay Committee. I expect to be bringing the full plan in front of the board and the Finance Committee, as is required under the Charter. And then really, for me, the next steps would be, I now commit this budget message and these budget documents to you, and you have an obligation under our Charter to do your examination of it and to hand it over to the Finance Committee at the appropriate time. And then all of us, all parties involved over the next six weeks, hopefully engage in a thorough, thoughtful, and vigorous discussion on our priorities and our budget going forward. So with that, with eighty-four days to go and almost speaking that long, it's my professional honor and somewhat of my relief to end the beginning and now hand it over to the board.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Let me get right into comments from the board and and then Carol, if Carol wants to add anything, Finance Director. Larry, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Jill. I do have some questions, high level at this point, because we haven't got any details. But just going through your list, the Cultural Council, I do, again, sound like a broken record, but I'd like to have two things discussion going forward, and one is a plan, which is how we're we're going forward with that. It's basically when it ties into the Cultural District as well, because something we've asked for, but we still, I don't think, know what our goal is at the end of this, the extent we have to do. And of course, I'm always looking for a full financial accountability. So we have, you know, operational maintenance, capital, time that we spend, other departments on that, so we know exactly what the expenses are, so we can inform town residents the benefits that you discussed, but also the what is costing us. Human health, you know, we've talked about that quite often, as we have with the Housing Advocate. I guess my concern, just, we have to figure out a way to pay for two additional positions, and then, and that's, I know you're working on. The Public Safety, those are, I agree with the goals on that. I am concerned, excuse me, about using grant money for a three-year term. We've we've had some experience with that, and when the money runs out, we still have the position. And so I would just encourage you to look at the five-year plan and be sure if we move forward with that, that we have money, that's actually in our plan as well, to pay for those positions, because we've had some, I'm sure Don remembers and others, that we've experienced that where we've, you know, had to end up paying for it. I do, I do think that this will, it's up to the town to decide, because this will be additional expenses now we're going to cover. And as you know, with inflation and everything, all the costs going up, we're all, you know, well, I can't, I hate to speak for the board, but we're all concerned about what this does to our tax rate as well, in addition to the expenses, so. But those are my main, high-level discussions.
Joe?
Thank you. And it's not that I have a response first to the issue of the the Director of Cultural Affairs, and really, the the impetus for all of this is, as the Selectman Ballantyne has said, the article that I'm creating for that position will cause us to have a discussion on the plan, the plan for the Cultural Center as a building, and what the Director will do in regard to that. So more to come on that for sure. But I appreciate the comment because I want to emphasize it tonight. The impetus for that position is to retain the Cultural Center going forward, and that's what the priorities get to, and I'll have certainly more information on that. But it was meant to really jumpstart that discussion, because I know the town, I think, had until perhaps two thousand twenty-three or twenty-four to really address the issue of the Cultural Center. But given all the things that were going on, I felt this may be the better time to get into that discussion. And then with regard to full financial accountability, absolutely, and it also offers me to let the board know that I have purposely kept this budget message first to the board, because I think it's appropriate for me to go to the board first. But tomorrow morning, we have a department head meeting where we'll be talking about next steps with the budget. And at that point, I will continue to remind department heads that I fully expect that either the Board of Selectmen or Finance Committee or both would be looking to hear from our department heads, and I think that's appropriate. For you to have, ask them those questions directly, so this process will still honor that commitment and give our department heads a direct conversation with Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen. And there was one other point that I wanted to add, but I've already forgotten it, so hopefully it'll come back to me and I'll say it again. Oh, thank you, it just came to me. I did not emphasize the four firefighters that were referenced. In my message, I talk about the fact that the administration and finance are working with the fire department to analyze that proposal, but at present, those grant positions are not factored into my draft budget. So thank you for that.
And I did understand that, that was just my caution was looking forward.
Thank you.
Jill?
Well, first of all, thank you for your work on the budget message. I think it's good, and and I think you've put a lot of time into it, it's pretty clear. You've you've hit upon so many of the major issues, as you say, we talk about almost at every meeting. And, you know, I I think none of us can downplay the pandemic and and the issues it's raised over the last couple of years. And I definitely think that we have to focus on health, as we've talked about numerous times, and the Health Inspector's a great idea, and the Program Specialist, because indeed, our population is aging, and we have an increased population through this pandemic that I don't think is going to change, and they are aging as well. You know, I I think that all of this budget, bar technology, which we've been talking about for a long time, is pandemic-related, and I, you know, has different influences. And I think like it, like any time, when we look at Capital Outlay, we have to shift things, and we have to be prepared for what's coming and what's slated, and just try to be as as prepared as we can be. And I think this budget message is setting us in the right direction, so I look forward to more in-depth, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, I won't, I won't repeat, because I think Larry pretty much said what was in my mind when I read through this this afternoon or over the weekend. I agree with the priorities. The challenge is going to be getting all that into a number that we can all live with. And certainly, I think the wild card in that pile is going to be the Cultural Center. It's a big building, and there's just a lot of missing, not missing, there's a lot of moving parts there. But the house, I can't speak highly enough about the Housing Advocate. If we're really going to make hay, we need that person on on the town's budget, in the building, taking care of housing. So I think this is a great, a great first step, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm not, I too, I'm not going to replicate everything that was said, because there were good comments. So I'll pick two areas, though. The Housing Advocate, I can say from the inside, it has been daunting to meet its policy boards and make decisions and not have somebody there during the interval between the meetings to be able to do action plans and be able to deliver deliverables. So I can't say enough about how important that is, because we're at the point now where we're not just conceptually talking about housing. We've got land, we want to start to talk about, okay, what do we do to develop it? And we need somebody who's a presence in the building, as Mary said. The second one is kind of a little bit off the wall, but I want to mention it because we're on that priority. The chief and I have had this discussion in the past. I would love to be able to have, within the context of the public outreach of the Police Department, I have long been an advocate of making sure that the Police Department looks like our community and has some Cape Verdean presence. It used to have a lot of presence there. I've spoken with Cape Verdean leaders throughout the past couple of years. This might be the opportunity, if this can get funded, to be able to reach out to, like, the tech school and and show the kids that, you know, you don't have to leave the Cape. There's an opportunity here to engage in a positive way with the community and get trained for a real career. So I don't want to lose the opportunity, and I don't want to lose that thought within everything else that's happening, because this this is real, is a real opportunity, if we're going to be doing what we're going to be asking them to do.
Thank you, Don. Joe, thank you for the budget memo. Looking forward to a lot more detail. I'll start with the Cultural Center, and and I applaud you for putting that on there as a priority. I think the, through the great work of Carolyn Carey, our Community Centers Director, Cindy Williams from the Chamber of Commerce, our Cultural Council, we have an amazing foundation for a culture in the town of Harwich. We're blessed to have that building. We fell into that building. That building would have been mothballed, and we'd be talking about tearing it down in the tune of a million dollars. And it's very easy, I think, for the critics to tell us what, from the outside, what we should be doing with that building. But there's an awful lot of people that are enjoying the use of that building, and there's an awful lot more we can do with that building because of the foundation that's been built on. We've just scratched the surface. Carolyn, with her with her limited resources, managed to fill that building. And we can, we can do a lot better, for sure, but again, it's easy to pick apart. But I sat on the Middle School Repurpose Committee, and it was really easy to say, let's turn it into housing, which is another one of our buzzwords, which I'll get into now. We're faced with a ninety-six-unit housing development across the street. But sitting on that Middle School Repurpose Committee, it was about a million dollars to tear it down and plant grass. The opposition of putting a housing complex next to an elementary school was great. We built that building to share a wastewater treatment facility that we're paying capital on every single year. We have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar-plus roof that we're still paying on, but the building is in great shape. And 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 part of what defines a town is culture, and is this Cultural District. And and I will tell you that more people have reached out since the latest kind of diving into turning that into something else or getting rid of it because of what the costs are, is overwhelming. People want to use that building. And and I'm hoping that we're not going to get the directive to go down that rabbit hole again and come up with nothing instead of using that building. So I full, fully support a cultural director. And again, between the harbor, between Harwich Center, Harwich Port, we've done a great job. And I think people recognize Harwich for its great school system and its cultural events, as well as our marinas. So I look forward to that position, and and I think, I hope people support the fact that grant, the grant opportunity in itself will pay for a lot of what we're talking about. Housing Coordinator, priceless. We're fifteen years too late to affordable housing, and all we do is talk. We've talked for years about about housing, and we've done nothing, except for now, we've built a trust, we've passed an accessory dwelling bylaw, but if we're going to go anywhere with housing for Harwich people, this position's a must. And I guess this is where the town will decide how important housing is and whether or not this gets voted, supported by the board, but voted at town meeting. The firefighters that you mentioned in here, the first conversation, I just want to tell the board, was today. And that was a conversation between the Deputy Fire Chief, myself, Fire Chief, Carol Capola and Joe, and we talked about it. So this is a, the very beginning stages of a proposal. Carol is putting numbers together, and the the concept of the conversation really was to get full information to the board before we have a more high-level conversation on it. So Joe put it into his memo, but it really is only at conversation stages. Board of Health, we we all read Katie's memo. She desperately needs help up there. Council on Aging, the growing population, they desperately need help down there. So I think this is a great message, great priorities, Joe, and I and I thank you for it, and I look forward to it. And and we may have to cut in other places, but you're hitting on the things that we've been talking about. I forgot IT. Six years, it's been a Board of Selectmen goal and objective to do something with IT, and we've never done anything.
Right, twenty.
So, well, my, at lea, at least six years for me. So you're hitting on the things that we've talked about consistently and forever, and I appreciate the fact that we're going to go forward with some of these things and let the voters decide what they want.
Thank you.
Carol, anything you'd like to add?
If you would like to have a brief overview of the documents that you have that we've distributed, that would be great. After the administrator's budget message, you have a summary document that that begins with just the general fund revenue, and as a summary, there's a summarized document with regard to general fund expenditures by department, and then it breaks down each one of those as as large, major categories, such as public safety and the revenue and expenses that are associated with public safety. Again, this year, I wanted to deliver you, at least by notation only, information with regard to full benefits, debt service, so full-on allocated costs by department, and that's, I provided that for you here as well. And so that's in the in the documents that you have seen in the past two years and and as part of the larger budget book, which we will include these as well when we, as we finalize that book. I think if you wanted to just look at Public Safety for a moment, and that's on the third page in, Public Safety includes Police, Fire, and EMS, Emergency Management Services. And this document shows the actual results from FY twenty-one, what's currently budgeted in FY twenty-two, and then what's proposed in FY twenty-three. The top section shows how the department is funded. The first line, of course, is real estate and personal property taxes. The second line, we allocate hotel, traditional lodging, The second line, we allocate hotel, traditional lodging, short-term rental, and meals exercise taxes. We have revenue that's derived from other governments, such as the state. And then we have departmental revenues themselves. So these are revenues that are generated by each department within public safety. So the large majority of that is ambulance. That's $1.6 million. And then special revenue fund line, that supports the EMS budget. So your EMS budget is 100% supported by FEMA fund that you have as a special revenue fund. And the last line in revenues is whether you're supporting that department or the proposal is to support that department with any free cash or reserves. The next section is personnel costs and other departmental costs as well as capital outlay. For the police department, capital outlay includes three cruisers for FY '23, which is their proposal. And then, and the final section is where I segregated out benefits and other costs that are typically in the aggregate in other areas of the budget, and that's how we budget for those funds, but I took them and separated them out by department and provided that information here. It has been requested in the past, so I thought I would continue to complete that exercise. And then finally, I provided debt service information so that you would know what debt is associated with police and fire, whether it's apparatus or buildings or so on and so forth. That bottom section, and there is a note on each one of these pages, because the employee benefits and debt service costs are, as I mentioned, they're budgeted in another section in the aggregate within the general fund operating budget. So every department looks just like this. So that is this section of the document, which I think, I believe I separated it out for you, so you should have, I believe, four or five sections. The next section of the document is looking at revenues in more detail. And then it provides you with specific details by department, by line item, for each revenue source, as well as what the anticipated state aid is going to be. And finally, we're all familiar with a document that, put your specs on, I guess, because it's a little small, a document that's typically in your warrant, so what goes to the folks that attend town meeting. And that is each department. So police and fire would be separate, and so would EMS on this. You'll see their salaries and wages, their expenses, and if they have any capital outlay. The final two documents are documents from our accounting system, and that's also by line item, subtotaled by broad category of salaries and wages and expenses, and the revenue report as well. We do expect to have a full and complete budget book for you within the next two weeks.
Thank you, Carol. Questions for Carol? Don?
No, I was remiss, too. It was a terrific endeavor for the budget message, and this is really good work, Carol.
Mary?
No, just thrilled to have the level of detail you provide, Carol. Thank you very much.
Julie?
Carol, you overwhelm me every time.
Is that because of the size of the font?
It's both. It's the numbers and the font. No, thank you. It's a great breakdown. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carol.
One priority that I missed, and I guess just on schedule, any board members that have any comments on this, obviously should get them to administration and Carol. But the plan is in two weeks and staff will reach out to the finance committee. But the meeting on the 22nd, and that's also charter-driven, is to get the budget to the finance committee. So it's my intention to have a joint meeting on the 22nd where the budget will be delivered by Carol and Megan, because Joe will be on vacation on the 22nd. So, John, if you could put that in your notes anyway and staff will reach out. But we want to deliver the budget to you on time this year, and we're going to work on that budget, I'm sure, as a board through the process and up until town meeting, but I expect that we'll be working on it together. And Joe, did we set a date for the meeting, the joint meeting?
So we have not. There is a tentative date that has been set aside, and the reason for that is the exercise I just did. We don't know what conditions we'd be having that meeting under at present. And I want to emphasize, the reason why we haven't done it since March of 2020 is because while it is, I think, an amazing exercise to have that day dedicated to the budget and have everybody in one room, we haven't committed to that yet because we need to know what parameters we'd be operating under. I don't think it is wise to do it if we have to be in a larger, much larger room with masks on. Having said that, we have a date in mind, we can work on that, but I would look for more guidance from the board, but also from health officials on how we think we can accomplish that.
I think at least this board has said that they would like to have that event. So I think we should aim in that direction, work with the Board of Health, but also get that date to the finance committee chair as soon as possible so that they can plan that day if they're going to do that day. And maybe we can do a hybrid on that day as well. I'd rather not, but maybe we can.
What is the date again?
So the date in mind is Saturday, March 5th, starting at, I believe, 9:30 is what we've traditionally done. So that's the date that we've set aside. It's about a month from now, and if we think we can accomplish it, we'll put it together.
And Joe, could you just tell the board what your plan is on the draft warrant?
So draft warrant, I've heard the board over several meetings identify articles that you wanted to have included. There are some boilerplate articles that I can put together, so my goal is to prevent the present, that was not a Freudian slip, to present the first iteration of a warrant at your meeting next week on February 14th. I emphasize it that way because it is by no means meant to be even close to what we're going to end up with, but it should include all of the articles that the board has already voted, the two articles that I just made reference to with regard to Director of Cultural Affairs and Housing Advocate. And the purpose of the date is this Friday, Friday, February 11th, excuse me, by noon time is the deadline for the Town Administration Board of Selectmen to receive any citizen initiative petitions. So what you'll get next week is a rudimentary version of the warrant with those articles that we expect, well, that the board has already put in the warrant, if you will, as well as copies of what the petitioned articles look like, and then really begin that discussion. And that's meant to kick off the more in-depth discussion of those two positions and certainly to get into the issues around culture and cultural center.
Thank you.
So that's all scheduled for next week, as well as, as I mentioned, Dr. Carpenter making a presentation on behalf of the Montemoy Regional School Committee.
I believe it's March 7th, the Conservation Commission's going to have a joint meeting with us to talk about their articles a second time. I sent that to staff today. One of them on the dock moratorium has changed.
Okay, thank you.
And they're now putting a time on it. So it's important that they come before us, and I sent you some documents that need to go to legal that it's obviously been challenged already by somebody that lives on the river. So can we please get that legal?
And would it be the board's desire to keep that from the draft next week until it's vetted by legal?
I think based on the legal letter we received, I'm not, I think we keep contemplating it's going to be on the warrant, but the letter was pretty crystal clear to me, so I'd like to see it.
Okay.
Which brings me to the sixth priority that we didn't talk about, that we've been talking about a lot, and that's owner's unknown and miscellaneous parcel, something else that the town has talked about for a very long time. And I know it was contemplated to add some money into the budgets in different areas to accomplish this. I don't think it's nearly enough. And to the board, I had an initial conversation with Joe today, and it will come back as part of the draft warrant conversation, is creating a warrant article to fund that rather than put money into a budget that will stay in a budget indefinitely. And I think that this problem is a fairly deep problem that's going to take a long time to clean up. But a warrant article with a much greater amount of money in it to really make an impact on this, to me, makes a lot of sense. And then maybe some cushion in the budget in a couple areas so that if the warrant article doesn't pass, we're not at a standstill again on trying to collect these properties. So as part of your draft warrant, we'll add discussion on a warrant article for owner's unknown and miscellaneous parcels. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something I plan on saying early and often because I think there's been a big misunderstanding on part of the public. While there is a lot of money involved in a lot of this, and some of it has to do with title abstracting, which is an expenditure, but people need to understand that if we do anything regarding eminent domain, that there needs to be an escrow account in the event that somebody might show up. That doesn't mean we're spending that money, but by law, it has to be set aside. So I'm going to keep repeating this. It's not really an expense. If somebody were to come forward with a fractional interest, they'd still have to clear up the tax situation on the land before they would ever get compensated out of that fund. But nonetheless, we're required to set the money aside.
And, Don, my intention would be to recommend to the board that we sell a few pieces of these land to pay all costs so there'll be no cost to the taxpayers. Mary?
That's what I was going to ask, is if that was where you were headed, because we talked about that before.
Yes.
Okay.
Julie?
No, I agree, and I think that that's what we have to do, is we have to figure out how to bank some so that we have it, but to Don's point, it's not necessarily going to be spent.
Larry? Joe, anything to add?
Just that, to conclude my part of the presentation for the budget message, my grandmother always said pride goeth before the fall. However, I'm going to use that word and to say that while I'm proud of what I've been able to deliver to the town, there is no pride of authorship or ownership of the document. What I would hope that everyone take these documents as is, as I said earlier, a starting point for a thorough and deep discussion over the next 84 days, because this is, as I've said to you all, anytime you visit me in my office, the most important thing we do in a town happens at town meeting, because that's when we solidify as a town our budget and our laws, and that's what makes us for the next year. So I hope that everyone relies upon my message and the great documents that Carol's provided as a starting off point for some really thoughtful discussions going forward and just knowing that we all have the same goal in mind, and that's to make our town better and stronger.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
John?
Thank you, John Chori, citizen and chairman of the Finance Committee. I just want to comment on Joe's presentation. An excellent closing argument there, Joe, and a great presentation on the priorities that you've outlined in the budget and stuff, and each selectman's comments on the priorities, too. I really appreciate that. And Carol, your excellent work, I know, on the details of the budget. I just have one question, though. I didn't see the budget in the packet on the town's website today or yesterday or the day before. Is it there or?
No, it was just presented to the board and will now be posted officially on the website in compliance with Chapter 9, Section 924, getting the budget materials out by the second Tuesday of February. So what Carol distributed tonight is what will go on the website.
That's great, but shouldn't it have been presented before so that the townspeople could be looking at it at home while people were talking, while I could be sitting in the audience looking at this budget, too? I just didn't see it yet, but I guess it'll be out tomorrow.
Well, if I may, my defense is I've met my obligations and deadlines under the charter with hours to spare. The deadline to get this process going is tomorrow.
But we were talking about it tonight, and I thought if you're talking about an agenda item, the presentation material has to be in the packet. If I may be wrong, but it's just a minor point, but I'll see it tomorrow. Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, I really appreciate what you're saying, except that it would be jumping the gun and it's always been frustrating for the Board of Selectmen to read about something that they're going to be presented before they ever get it presented. This is the sequence. He presents it to us, once it becomes public through us, then it becomes something the public sees.
And let's be clear, it's not the budget that's going to be on the website tomorrow. The budget is going to be presented in two weeks, on the 22nd, to the Finance Committee. Right now is work material and a budget message. And the budget message, was that in the packet tonight, Joe?
Yes.
So the budget message and what we were talking about tonight was on the website, the numbers that we got. The budget message was on the website, or sorry, in the packet.
And on the website as of Saturday morning.
Okay. So the numbers and backup material the board got today is new, and that will be put on tomorrow, but it is not the budget.
I didn't see the budget.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? All set? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Consent agenda?
Yes, consent agenda, please.
I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda, which has four items. First, to approve the Harwich Garden Club request to use the parking lot of 203 Bank Street for their annual fundraiser. Second, vote to approve a Caleb Chase request in the amount of $434. Third, to accept the resignation of Mark Kelleher from the Harwich Housing Authority. And last, to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, February 22nd, 2021, and November 1st, 2021.
Second. They moved in second as discussion. Mary?
Just one thing, I sent an email to Ellen and Danielle this afternoon with minor corrections. Our beloved finance director's name was spelled wrong, and there was a comment that Larry made, but the comment wasn't there. So I just moved that we approve it pending those corrections.
And what was the comment, just for transparency?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay.
Because it started with, I asked Larry the question about what was the status of the treasure chest committee, and it said, "Selectmen, Ballantyne stated," and it just got missed.
That's been a great comment.
Does the board have a problem?
They had to block it out.
Would that change? Not significant change.
Right.
Don?
Thanks, Mary, because I was going to say that there were some typos, too, but I can infer what really was meant from them. In the gist, it's fine. And I don't want to glide over this. I'm going to at least mention that we appreciate Mark's efforts. It's with sadness that we accept his resignation.
But he'd be joining us on the Finance Committee. And my only comments related to the Garden Club, that event is in April. If by chance we sell that building by April, I'm sure the board can find another place for them. Not that I think we're going to sell it by April, but as long as it's a provision.
We will certainly take care of the Garden Guild.
No further discussion. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. New business, Don, do you want to do that motion?
Sure. I move that we accept the recommendation of the interview committee for the following individuals with the following appointments. Lynn Bedell, full member of the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee with a term to expire June 30th, 2023. Tricia Murray, recommended for a full membership in the Voter Information Committee with a term to expire June 30th, 2024. Eileen Garrity, recommended as an alternate member for the Treasure Chest Committee with a term that expires June 30th, 2022. Noella Morrison, a full member of the Treasure Chest Committee with a term to expire June 30th, 2022. And Vicki Goldsmith is a full member of the Harwich Cultural Council with a term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Second. Moved in second in any discussion.
I just want to point out one thing. Vicki Goldsmith, when looking at the application, it looks like she has a lot of grant writing experience.
A ton, and most people would know Vicki as the Executive Director of Habitat. So she has another life that's whole apart from this, so she's got that skill set.
Mary?
I was just surprised. I know there were some people for REC, and I don't see an appointment for REC here.
We're going to talk about that on the Selectmen's report?
Okay. And the other question I have, in going through one of those minutes that we just approved, there was talk, I believe Emily talked to us about having a human services committee to manage the grants, and it doesn't look like anything ever happened with that. So I don't know where that belongs.
Okay.
I saw the same thing.
Bring it back. REC said she brought... REC, since you brought it up, the Interview Committee could not agree. This is the first time, I think, in my seven years that I've seen it. But the process for them not agreeing is that it comes back to the full board for a vote.
Okay.
And then in the Selectmen's report, I was going to discuss briefly how you want to do that. But I was, my intention was to put it on next week for full board discussion. As Don pointed out to me earlier, each interview was 20 minutes long. Do we, the question at the end is going to be, do we want to re-interview everybody or just listen to Don and Larry say the merits and then make a decision based on what they say in the packet material we have? So that will come back.
Great, thanks.
Roll call vote on the consent agenda? I mean, on the appointments, committee appointments? Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Mary, B and C, please.
Okay. I move that we vote to approve the renewal of a Class 4 auto repair license with Harwich Save on Gas for Route 28.
Second. Moved in second in any discussion. Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to approve a new weekday entertainment license for the Hot Stove Saloon, 551 Route 28, Friday and Saturdays, 9:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., recorded or live music with amplification. Live music, acoustic only.
Second. Moved in second in any discussion. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Old business update on tax collections. I see Amy is here. Amy, do you want to go over the memo, or Carol? Or both?
That's good. This is Amy Bullock, Treasure Collector. Well, the memo is pretty straightforward. It's just an update from a couple of weeks prior, from January 18th. The only update I have to that today is 11 more of the FY21 parcels were paid. So that brings that, or, excuse me, eight parcels were paid at just over 11,000. So that brings us to 46 unpaid FY21s at this time. Other than that, there weren't a whole lot of updates in this memo, just because the timeframe was pretty short from the last one.
Yes. Thank you, Amy. Questions from the board? Larry?
None. Making so much of a steady progress, it looks like.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions.
Mary?
I just really liked the level of detail that you put into this, and I'm glad you're going to be able to produce most of that report that John Chori had requested. I'm quite pleased with that.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know that it was a short timeframe, but I assure you, the public has been kind of chomping at the bit to make sure that this is not falling off our radar screen, and it isn't.
And I would echo that. I think that we're going to be looking for updates at least once a month. Does it seem to you that people are coming forward now that this is getting a lot more discussion and that we're talking about owners unknown and miscellaneous parcels? Or is it just the ones that we know about?
Right now, I think the big action is on the letters that Attorney Coppola had sent out. So those letters are actually dated to be paid by today. I do give them another couple of weeks before they get advertised. So that is, I think, the most action we're seeing right now.
You're not getting people that are setting up payment plans, the ones that can't?
The FY21s are being paid in full.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any payment plan activity?
I had one new payment plan. Somebody came in last week to speak to me about that. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Carol?
So with regard to the report that Treasure Collector and I are working on, we attended a training session a couple of weeks ago on Crystal Reports, because we just got them installed on our systems. And it became quickly apparent to us that the complexity of the report that Mr. Chori is looking for was going to take us 60 or 70 hours to write. So I've contacted an outside consultant, who's, you know, an expert in that field, and believes that he can do that, complete the reports in about 15 or 20 hours. And so we're working with him to get him access via VPN to the town system. I had him sign an agreement on data access already. And so that'll be moving forward. It was very encouraging that that 15 to 20 hours could happen, you know, pretty quickly. And he had assured me that if, you know, as soon as he had access, and we're working with Barnstable County IT right now on that, and we have been for a few weeks, that he would have it done quickly, so.
Thank you.
Very encouraging.
Any questions?
Right now, the Treasure Collector has put on the website lien balances. And I don't know if you've heard, or even talked about that, if you've heard from anyone, like with regard to the report on the website. It's going to be updated on a monthly basis.
Yep.
Right now, until we have the other information. My only concern about the information that we would be providing to the public, to the general public, you know, if somebody is 30 days late on a current year tax bill and is placed on the website for advertisement, you know, it may be a little stringent, you know? I don't know if you just want to think about just lien balances or something of that nature, because then it can be updated on an annual basis when, you know, these properties go to lien. So it's just some food for thought.
Thank you. I would agree with you that 30 days should not be advertised on the website.
Right.
Any questions for Carol? Larry?
No, thank you.
Julie?
No.
Mary?
No, I agree with Michael. We don't want to do that.
Don?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Joe, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think it was well set by the Finance Director.
Great. Thank you very much. Carol, can I get a motion on Contract A? Carol.
I was just going to say. Thank you, Joe. I move that we vote to approve a contract change order for Develis Zareen, Inc. for engineering services related to the project management of the community playground behind the elementary school in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
Moved in second in any discussion. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. 5-0. Town Administrator's report?
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said at the outset of the meeting, you know, the town now has, or is about to lose the expertise and services of our town clerk. However, I wouldn't want anyone at this meeting or watching this meeting to feel that we will not be well-served and ready for the town election, which is in 84 plus 15 days. So even I know that's 99 days. With the board's permission, standard operating when a town has a vacancy in town clerk ahead of an election is to seek the services of an interim town clerk. And the protocol would be, I would reach out to my former town clerk buddy and Clerk College roommate, Bob Cutler. Bob Cutler currently serves as the President of the Mass Town Clerks Association. And that association has a wonderful program where retired clerks offer their services to towns on just such an occasion. So if the board has no objection, I'd be reaching out to President Cutler as early as tomorrow and hopefully have somebody as close to the vacancy date as possible. But I have high hopes for the Mass Town Clerks helping out yet another town as they often do.
Thank you. Any objection from the board?
No, sounds good.
Thank you. And that concludes my administrator's report.
Selectmen's report. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to get too deep into this, but I'm not sure there's enough hours in the day in that office for one person who's coming in and at the same time has to train somebody that doesn't really know the office. And that's the entirety of the office. So I'm just concerned, and I'm laying it out there.
Thank you. Mary?
I agree with what Don said. That's challenging.
Julie?
I just want to say that I went by the Community Center. Are we doing Selectmen's report, right? And I'm just making sure. And I went by the Community Center for the birthday celebration, and it looked like an absolute blast. There were ducks everywhere. And I really wanted to play. But it was really well-attended, and congratulations. What a great event.
Did you find the two missing ducks, or did anyone find them?
Every duck in return.
Larry?
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed that. I made a mistake of meeting my grandkids in the Hyannis at the water park at Cape Cod. Which every kid in Cape Cod was there for a second. But congratulations.
I have no report, just what's the board's pleasure on next week as far as the REC committee goes? Do you want the applicants here for an interview? Or do we want to have a roundtable and listen to Don and Larry and make a decision?
Gosh, they listen enough to me.
Yeah. My preference would be that, because they're all great applicants. Our differences were distinct, but nothing against the applicants. So I think we can explain that rather than forcing it up here in front of us again. I'd rather make it easy.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I agree. I think if you both state your thoughts, that'll be sufficient.
Well, we're not arguing against anyone because of negative anything.
Right.
Different direction.
Don, that work for you?
Yeah.
Can I just ask you one thing? Did you say Scott Carpenter is coming next week or the following week?
14th.
Oh, so next week.
You're right.
One, I do have one, very brief. Don't worry.